Dewey. Do what about our folks online at the online? I'm gonna, I'm gonna call, call Row for the trustees. So trustee Salivar?
Yeah.
Uh trustee Stoma, I'm here. Uh trustee Wilson. Trustee Wilson, I can see her.
I'm here.
Okay, trustee Sullivan, here. Trustee Pierce?
Present.
Trustee Maria?
Present.
Trustee vote? Uh no response from trustee vote. And trustee Kim?
Present.
Dr. Head, do you certify that the posting of this workshop or a meeting has been?
Yes, it was supposed to in accordance with the law.
Alrighty, we are going to adjourn to a private session. We will not be back any earlier than 5:45. Our target is to get back between five at 5:45, but no later than six. So that's our target. So I'm adjourning this meeting until that time. Comment? Any other public comments?
Yes, Desiree.
Yes, sir. We have two public comments this evening. Um I'd like to call to the podium Paulette Adamick.
I promise I won't be more than.
Five minutes.
You know, I don't know if you all noticed, but I don't think we did the pledge of allegiance. For the call to order.
We had a financial workshop prior to this and we did the pledge there. We thought it was a bit redundant. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure we're in good order.
We're in good order.
Now, that's not part of my five, is it?
No, no.
But I only need.
You go right ahead, ma'am.
Good evening, board. My name is Paulette Adamick. I am here this evening not only to represent myself as a Montgomery County resident, but also on behalf of many other Montgomery County residents that are not able to be here present tonight as they are in Houston at state convention. Upon receipt of this year's property tax appraisal information, I became gravely concerned regarding the continued monumental increase in my property taxes, as has many others. I have been a resident of Montgomery County since June of 2000 and have seen my taxes more than double over the years. Thus lending my own investigation into the various entities owning a part in this increased taxation. In short, as a property owner with a homestead exemption, I am aware as outlined per the Texas Comptroller's Office that I am entitled to a 20% exemption of my property's appraised value. Currently, I am receiving a mere 1.2% from Lone Star College System. Therefore, at this time, I am requesting the remaining 18.8% of my exemption, of which I am entitled. Furthermore, please note, as per the Texas State Constitution, taxation must be equal and uniform. No single property or property type should pay more than its fair share. Additionally, we are asking you to adopt the no new revenue tax rate, Texas Code 26.044, as now is not the time for property taxes to go up. I am grateful for the opportunity to bring forth this insight and shed light on circumstance for which many are unaware, as recently was I. It is our hope through this transition, excuse me, this transitional time of dark to light, that we may unite in truth as one for the good of all humanity. Darkness, half-truths, deception, and lies are being met by fury as we, the people, rise up and demand what is righteous and sovereign. No more use of the taxpayer's dollar to line the pockets of the elites and the corporations from the local levels to the Fed, all the way up to the global. Enterprises, associations, foundations, and all systems in between. As my parents always taught me, it is never too late to do what is right and just. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else for public comment?
Yes, sir. We have one more. Robert Olendi.
Good evening, Lone Star Board members. Thank you for your dedication in allowing me to speak. I've been a resident of Montgomery County for the past 11 years and have seen the expeditious growth in the community. I understand that with our property taxes, we get a homestead exemption. I also understand that the Lone Star College System is one of the taxing units within my property taxes. The way I understand it, Lone Star College System can grant up to a 20% deduction on my homestead exemption, but presently, the central, the Montgomery County Central Appraisal District says that you're only granting about a 1% deduction. In Montgomery County and within the Lone Star taxing district these last few years, I have witnessed an explosive growth of strip malls and businesses like I've never seen before. Probably is one of the fastest growing areas in our country. With this new growth and all these new businesses paying property taxes, I'm sure your tax revenues have grown considerably as well. This is why I'm asking for you to consider raising the exi- the exemption amount on my property taxes above the current 1% towards and including 20%. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this matter. And please take this under consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
If they want.
Dr. Head, are there any introductions, special guests, recognitions that need to be made?
No other, no other speeches, okay, or introductions, no.
Then we're going to move to approve the minutes of the May 5th workshop and regular meeting. Can I get a, a a motion? Thank you. Boy, I tell you, senior moment. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes of the?
No move.
Second. Trustee Stoma? I have, I have a correction on the last, um, the minutes from last meeting, if you don't mind, before we vote.
Okay.
Is that fine? Is Melissa there? Is that fine for me to do this, Melissa?
Recognize this.
Uh trustee Wilson, go ahead.
Okay, so um on, at the last meeting, um, action item number five with the Bethune Academy. Um, I, I highlighted some things because I was going back through and some things came to light literally after the meeting. Um, I asked for clarification on the agenda item and was wanting more information on the lease. Um, Mario said that he would not be able to get the lease until after it was already approved, which I, which I realized then was a, uh, not a true statement. Because as soon as I looked at my email while we were still in the board meeting, I got a message from, um, Desiree from Mario and said his team had notified him that they had the contract after several trustees asked for it, and I got it in the, in my email. So I feel like that needs to be a correction of the, like a correction, like he needs to come and retract what he said and, and correct it on for the, for the minutes. Because he technically did have the, he had the contract. Um, I don't, I guess it's the, the, before the final approval of a contract, but he did have a contract and he's had a contract. So I have, I have an issue with that because that's, that wasn't correct information given to trustees. So I don't know how we need to handle this, but I think that needs to be what he said needs to be retracted and, and corrected on record because we were on record in an open meeting. Is that possible?
Trustee, um, also, would you repeat your, just to create out the entire thing, but the request, what's your request one more time?
The meet, the record needs to be corrected on this action item before we approve it. Because he, in the open meeting, he said he didn't have it, but he did. And he didn't come up before the meeting ended to correct his statement. You, you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, I do.
Okay. We gotta be careful. You know what I'm saying? We, we just gotta get things right when we're talking about contracts and stuff like that. And if you had the contract, it should have been brought to detention before the meeting ended, not at, not during and not saying anything.
Something said to me, the minutes are a reflection of what actually happened.
At the minutes, it's like it's, I'm sorry, go ahead. I mean, if I understood, like in the minutes, it's you just typing, but you, what if you said?
They go counsel.
That's not, that's not the issue. The issue is what he said was incorrect. So I need that to, he needs to retract what he said and make it, make it a true, you know what I'm saying? Because you.
Trustee, well, when you, when we vote for, in the agenda, when we, when we vote for the minutes, it's just what, you, you vote what is being said during the time. I completely understand what you're trying to say, but we're just voting what was said during the time. That was it.
But it was incorrect in an open meeting.
Okay, sure.
I have the email with the timestamp and everything you said, so we're, we're.
Maybe, there may be a different mechanism for addressing that, but changing the minutes is not the appropriate way to do that because the minutes are legally a reflection of what was said and what occurred in a meeting. So if you change what's said in the minutes, you are, you are, it wouldn't be an accurate depiction of what occurred at a meeting. So the approval of the minutes is merely an agreement that they accurately portray what happened. So that's the question of approval minutes. Whether you, whether anybody thinks that some information that was provided was any accurate or needs to be clarified, that's a, that's a different process. And, and so I'm not trying to say there isn't a process to do that, but, but changing the minutes is not the appropriate way to do that.
Well, wouldn't he come here now and correct, correct his statement on these minutes since he, since it wasn't correct? Like, what's the process? That's why I'm asking.
I don't even know if this item's on the agenda to be, to be addressed. It can be put on an agenda. It can be handled after the meeting or some kind of clarification can be provided uh later, but the approval of the minutes is not really the proper mechanism for coming back and readdressing an issue that was addressed in the minute, in the meeting. Otherwise, you could have this on every item that's on a, on the, on the minutes, right? Somebody could say, well, I've gathered more information and I want the minutes to reflect further information or the like. So what I would recommend is that you take up the request on the approval of the minutes merely as do they accurately reflect what happened at the meeting? And it's, I, what I understand you saying, they do, they reflect what was said.
I got, that's what I'm saying. I got an email during the meeting, so I, I don't know. I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna contact state of Texas and see, see how we need to handle this because
Yeah.
I just feel like it gotta be correct. You know what I'm saying? Like, I'm, 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 I'm immune.
If I understand what counsel is saying is that the minutes reflect what happened, whether it's accurate or not. And, uh, and that's what we're approving. Now, if there's an issue with credibility of what, what happened, that's another issue which needs to be addressed. And I'd agree, it should be addressed. Right now, I'm not sure, sure how that should be addressed, but we need to explore it. So right now, what we're look, looking for is the approval for the meetings as they.
Yeah, I can go ahead. Yeah, I can go ahead with the vote. I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Okay, I believe we, we had a motion and a second. Uh, do we need to do a real call vote on this, you think, folks?
Yes.
Okay, uh, so let's just start, uh, trustee Salivar.
Prove.
Voting on the motions to approve the meetings from May 5th, meeting minutes from May 5th.
Approve.
All right. Trustee Kim?
Yes.
I, Art Maria.
Trustee Sullivan?
Yes.
Trustee vote?
Aye.
Uh, I, Mike Stoma, say aye. Um, trustee Wilson?
I'm abstaining.
Trustee Pierce?
Abstain and let the record note that I'm abstaining because I'm not quite sure legally if, well, I'm not, I'm not gonna prove something that I know something was wrong with, okay? I don't know if it's legal or not, so I'm, that's why I'm abstaining. Let the record reflect that.
Well noted. So the, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, any special reports or announcements, Jason?
Just a couple of updates for the entire board. Uh, we are, I mentioned earlier that right now for the fall, we, as of today, we're minus 4% in student headcount and minus three in credit hours, so we have a long way to go. And you'll see again, uh, major marketing effort. And I know the college presidents are aware of what's going on. And so there's a lot of, we have, for example, we haven't enrolled all of the dual credit students like we normally do. It's just depends on the calendar, so we'll keep close, we'll monitor that very closely. On some good news, the, we've received a report, or I did last week, about the student success for the spring. And this student success is As, Bs, or Cs, A, B, or C. And I've been concerned about the impact of COVID. And so I'm pleased to report that the student success rates actually went up uh for every category of student. For example, for black students, it went up 64% from 2021, up to 68%. And for Hispanics, it went from 73 to 74. For Anglos, it went 80 to 81. The face-to-face success rate for classes was 83%. For online, it was 72. So, uh, we, we, we have work to do. We know that if we're offering a lot of online classes, there's about a 10% differential. But what I'm pleased about is that we're seeing some steady improvements all across the board. We still have gaps and that's part of our, uh, when we did the accreditation and part of the budget process was to, um, this quality improvement plan. That is one of our major priorities, just to try to close that gap between, uh, Hispanics, blacks, Anglos, and making sure that everybody has, um, I think, the support that they need. We're trying to figure out exactly where that, what the issues are and how we can help students. I also, um, we are also very clear that, uh, our, our biggest challenge is, uh, black males. And while the improvement rate is going up, it's still lagging behind. And so we're working on that in different, uh, Houston, Houston North, and by the way, has been one of the leaders in that. And we're seeing results with what Dr. Wright and his group are doing. And I actually think that's going to be the model for some of the activities that we do. And that's a lot of work, a lot of personalized attention. We've got, uh, eight-week classes. We've got smaller classes. We've got people that are dedicated and faculty and staff that are dedicated to helping these students. So we have a lot of work to do, but we are making progress, but, um, and we're going to continue working on that. But I, again, we're seeing some real progress and results. And so we'll have more reports over this probably in the fall as we get more data about what you're doing and what, what's working. And, and, and other colleges are showing some results, but that's the one that we're seeing the, Houston North is doing what it, what it was designed to do. So, so that's my report.
Board members, do you have any reports to?
I do.
Trustee Kim?
Yes, thank you. I have several items that I'd like to mention that speak to the quality of the great things that are happening here at Lone Star. Had the pleasure of attending two of the commencement exercises, University Park and Montgomery. Want to thank Dr. Ardalon and, and Dr. Riley and their staff for the great job that they did. And I'm sure all of the other graduation ceremonies were equally good. Um, had the pleasure of attending a, a legal conference that was organized by Mario, a lot of good information across, uh, various organizations that took place at that legal conference. Want to commend Dr. Caruso and her staff for the Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship Luncheon that took place because in that, in that luncheon, there were three recipients of Lone Star College that received, um, those scholarships from the Jack Kent Cooke Foundation. And those amount to hundreds of thousands of dollars for those students. And in addition to that, there were 17 other students who were semifinalists and they were awarded $10,000 each from the Lone Star Foundation. So that was, that was a very, very nice event. I want to compliment the college, uh, recognized by the Houston Business Journal as, uh, a, receiving a diversity in business awards 2022, specifically as an outstanding supplier diversity, which recognizes companies that successfully seek out and do business with minority suppliers. So Lone Star College was mentioned along with Baker Hughes, J.E. Dunn, and the University of Houston. So congratulations to Lone Star for that recognition. And then finally, I'd like to mention that Fortune 500 Magazine and Great Places to Work listed Lone Star College as one of the best workplaces in Texas for 2022, which was the only institution of higher education that was mentioned in that list. So just great things happening across, uh, the campuses and within the administration. And I sincerely appreciate the fine work that all of those folks are doing.
One thing, I want to add one, one piece on the, uh, Jack Kent Cooke Scholarship. So an anonymous donor gave us 1.6 million dollars a couple of days before that. Is that right? Yeah, 1.6 million. And the students did not know, the students that were there did not know that they were receiving a $10,000 scholarship. I wish you could have been there and seen this. And then the other students were receiving 50, 55,000 a year for three years to go to the university of their choice. And so it was really, uh, and they had videos where their students were surprised. They had a call from, uh, Dr. Caruso with their parents there. They, their parents knew about it, but the students didn't. And so they were all hugging and they had tears in their eyes. I mean, I cannot tell you how much 10,000 or 55, I mean, how would you like for your child or how would you like to receive a $55,000 a year scholarship to go wherever you want to? And they have the opportunity to go to graduate school even after that for more money. So it was very uplifting, very uplifting. So thank you for being there, so.
Yes, sir, if I may, can I give an update on redistricting real quick?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, the redistricting committee recommended to the full board that we cancel. And I'm looking at our redistricting website that we cancel our June 16th meeting, so that meeting will not be held. It is noted on the website that it has been canceled, so that's accurate and up to date. The next meeting will be a special board meeting on redistricting, June 29th at 5:00 PM. Yeah, here in the, uh, the system office at the Woodlands. And the action item will be to adopt final map. And the redistricting committee is myself, trustee Mario, and trustee Pierce. Really want to thank them again for the help and the time that they've given to this process. It's been very inclusive. It's been, uh, more than collegial, uh, even when there were disagreements, we worked through them. And it's just been a fabulous process. Very proud to be a part of it. Thank you.
Great, and that's June 29th, sir?
Uh, yes, sir. June 29th, 5:00 PM.
All right, good. Thank you. Any?
Yeah. Uh, Rio? Yes, hi, thank you. I just wanted to also, also give kudos to, uh, the, um, faculty and, and presidents. I was fortunate enough to attend, uh, to, I know I wish I could attend in all of them, uh, graduations, um, commensments. Um, and I was able to join Dr. Blantzen and, uh, and it's always a good opportunity to, to, to reach out, to, to talk to everyone. Uh, you know, never gets old, you know, how exciting it is and how, how important it is. And I was also able to attend the, the one at University Park, the, the Dr. Ardalon. And, um, and, uh, some of you know, uh, my, I'm very excited particularly because my, I was able, and my son also graduated, where he got an associate's. And understand that, uh, I'm one of those who had a parent who had a child, uh, graduated from high school in 2020 and there was no commencement. So, so I was looking forward to, to, to be able to do that. And, um, I was going to say that, um, you know, certainly, uh, as a board member, uh, we get an opportunity to, to learn and to hear from parents and to, uh, the community. But, uh, you learn a lot when you're a parent of a student. Uh, I went too quick, which, which in, in, uh, and I say that because he's, my son's ready to transfer to, to the university, uh, Texas San Antonio in the fall. He's doing an internship, as, as you know, Dr. Ardalon, and over at, uh, at Metro now, where I work. And, and he, he got a internship. He's, uh, he's excited about that. But, uh, but before that, um, I would just share with Dr. Ardalon a second ago that, uh, I probably was the first, I'd be, a month before I attended the, uh, the open house, was it the open house? Yeah, we, we, you know, there were a lot of open houses at, at different locations. And, and I probably was the first parent who goes to an open house when the kid, when their son or child finishes, the student finishes camp school. Because I, you know, what happened is during COVID, I couldn't go, couldn't step on campus. And when I found out that there were open houses, I said, you know what, I'm gonna go once at least before he graduates. So, so again, uh, the experience is great, got to see, meet a lot of professors and as, um, a lot of students, the enthusiasm, the excitement that goes on in those open houses. So I'm definitely going to go to more of you guys, those, those events, open houses and make sure I attend all of the commencement exercises. And, uh, so I wanted to share that with you guys. Thanks.
You bet. Anyone else want to, uh, comment, sub to your report?
Yes, uh, I, I attended the, uh, the graduations for, um, Montgomery and the, and the grad, the, the graduates in our baccalaureate at Aldine. And, uh, that was, that was something. I made a speech in 1989 in this, not this building, the building over there, when it was part, part of Hark. Uh, and we had, uh, failed in our efforts in getting higher education in Montgomery County at that time. Uh, but shortly thereafter, we went back and did the, did the elections again. And that was when Montgomery County, oh, uh, well, Connor ISD was annexed into uh, what is now Lone Star. I've forgotten which name it was now at that time when, and it was, it was Nor, it was North Harris.
North Harris Montgomery in Montgomery County.
It was, yeah, but, but, yeah, it was North Harris Community College. Then it went to North, North Harris, Montgomery.
County.
Africa. So now seeing a step up to, to being able to grant baccalaureate degrees. It's just made my day. That's.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? I'm gonna make one. I was fortunate, privileged enough to, uh, attend the graduation at, uh, Saffir. And one, it was excellent, just actually planned and executed. I mean, it took us what, three hours to get through those folks? But what impressed me the most was the dual credit people. They're all dressed up in their high school colors. And they're out there getting their college degrees before they're getting their high school degrees. It's just amazing. And that's where we need to focus. I mean, we need to focus a lot of places. But I, I would like to see that double and triple because that's where, that's where salvation is for this society. We've got to get these kids younger. Uh, get them into the, to the workforce, get them, get them out and, uh, create hope for these, an opportunity. So I just want to say that was a, I was moved by that. And my, and my hand was drooping and my, and my legs were cramping and standing for three hours, but it was worth it. So I want to thank everyone who, uh, who was there and organized this and executed on it. Thank, thank you very much for the opportunity. Moving on to the consent agenda. Uh, IM11 has been pulled from the agenda, so we'll not consider IM11. Do we want in, any, uh, recommendations to consider individual items?
Uh, Mr. Chair, did we go over the policy review committee update or did I miss it? I'm sorry, but you know, after the redistricting, I didn't hear anybody say anything about the policy review unless I, I missed it. Did I miss it?
No, you didn't miss it. I mean, we, we can, uh, do you have something? No, you didn't miss it. I mean, we, we can, do you have something to report on the policy committee?
I don't have anything to report, but I have questions. You know, who, who's on the committee? We haven't met. Are we having any meeting days? What's going on with it? That's what I'm trying to figure out. I wish somebody would report on it. Because I haven't heard anything since before the pandemic.
Well, that's a, that's a good point because I, I sit on that committee. I think trustee Kane is on the committee and trustee votes on the committee. And. There was just an issue raised at our last meeting. I mean, let, let's be honest with each other, right? We're a little bit remiss on addressing policy changes and we need to. I mean, if we don't do it, it's going to stretch, stretch into next year and it's going to be another set of issues on top of those. So I encourage trustee, trustee vote, I encourage that we, we consider moving forward with the policies that, that need to be considered. Certainly I'm willing to help you. I sit on that committee. I'll help you as much as I can.
Mario has sent me a, well, I think he sent it out to all of us, a list of prioritized issues to start on and. We'll, we'll get something scheduled.
All right, sir.
Before the next meeting.
Thank you. So trustee Pierce, well, trustee vote has agreed to move forward. So we'll move forward with that.
Okay, I'll be waiting to hear from you trustee vote to see when our next, because I have issues with the policies. Thank you.
Okay.
Any, any other comments from trustees? Or consider the consent agenda? Alrighty.
Yeah, I had.
Go ahead.
And this is a. A question, I think we kind of touched on a couple of meetings ago. As I went through and looked at the, the metrics that were used in the choosing of. Contractors or engineers and we had, we had some contracts that were passed there. That we, we need to discuss those metrics. And I, I think that's a separate item from the, the policies, but. They may lead into the policies. So.
Okay.
Have you got something to put together?
Well, what, what the chancellor was commenting to me is we need to do this. Absolutely. And we think it's better handled than a retreat.
Yes.
And we, I think we talked about maybe he's trying to get everybody together in July, maybe for retreat. And along with that, since we're going to go into consent agenda, we, we really need to talk about. The, how shall I say, the recording of these consent agenda items and, and what is needed and what's. What makes them clear and what makes them not clear. We need to get board input on that, which I think we would consider in the same workshop. Is that correct? That's the intent. So. So trustee vote, I mean, is that?
Yeah.
It's acceptable, uh, action here that we'll, we'll set, we'll get together. I guess Steve, you guys will coordinate that. Okay, trustee Salavar and, and Chancellor Head will, will coordinate that with the rest of us and try to get a workshop set up to go through it.
I'll, I'll send you some notes I made on the, on these.
Okay. Any other comments before the consideration of the consent agenda? Going once, going twice. Okay. I'll ask the question again. Are there any recommendations from trustees to pull any items for, for individual discussion on the consent agenda?
Yes, this is trustee Eric Wilson. Um, I just have a, a question for six and eight. It's the same question, but I just have a question for them.
All right. So we'll pull six and eight for individual discussion.
And trustee Pierce, uh, number 14.
Number 14.
Yeah, action item 14.
Say again, please?
Action item 14.
So I have recommendations that we pull action items, agenda items six, eight and 14. Any others? Okay. So do I, I will ask for a motion to approve. On the consent agenda, I'm action items, one, two, three, four, five. Seven, nine, 10, 12 and 13. I have one motion. I need a second. Second motion. All those in favor? Hi, hi. All those opposed?
Abstain. Trustee Pierce, trustee Pierce abstains and I would directly reflect that I'm abstaining from voting to approve the full consent agenda. My reason being again. That the documentation is presented in the action items are not clearly justified. Thank you.
So we have one abstention. So the, the item passes. Thank you. Well, financial reports, Jennifer, I think you're up again. I don't know how much.
We gotta go through six, eight and 14.
Oh gosh, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself. All right. So do I have a, a motion to consider item six?
Motion.
Second.
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 Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just have some questions, like just a few questions. So I'm looking at this evaluation tabulation, right? And so I see it says base price. Alternate to price and owner, owner's contingency. What, what is the alternate to price and owner contingency? What is that?
Yes, so alternate pricing and owner's contingency is a standard item within construction projects. So first, the alternate pricing. Is sometimes when we're looking at a project and there might be additional items we might want to do if it fits within the budget. That's included in the requested pricing or alternate options for things, items that the project might incorporate. That's what the alternate pricing is. So it's for additional options that we might want to add on later. The owner's contingency also with any construction project, right? If there's delays in general conditions. If there's just unforeseen things when they get into the project. Or modifications that need to occur along the way, sort of like if you're doing a project on your house and you think it's going to be one price, you might want to. Incorporate a possible contingency for additional costs that come up once you get into the project. So that's what the owner's contingency is for and it's called owner. So Lone Star College in this case is the owner. So it's Lone Star College that has to approve releasing use of those contingency funds if the project calls for it.
Okay, is this something new that you all have started doing? Cause I went back and looked at some of the other agenda items and I didn't see it. Is this going to be something included only on. Construction projects, but I looked at some of those too and I didn't see it.
Um, so it is a standard thing that we do. It, I can go back and look. It might just be in this case, we included that additional information. And if, again, as we have the discussion about what information is included, if that's something that we want to create as a new standard to include going forward. That additional amount of information, we could do so.
Okay.
But I will say, yeah, no, it's not, the owner's contingency and alternate pricing is definitely not a new practice within construction projects. Thank you.
Any other comments on item six?
That was my same question for eight too.
There are no other questions than item six and I'll ask for a vote of approval. All those in favor of item six?
Hi.
Hi.
Eric Wilson is abstaining.
Trustee Pierce abstains.
Do we need to, do we need to do a real call on that one? I don't think, we had two abstentions. That's what I call. Okay, then the item passes. Thank you. Uh, do you have a motion to consider item eight?
Motion.
Second.
It was the same question for six. They have the same things. That's why I was asking and the rest of them didn't.
So what was the question again? I'm sorry.
Um, with the alternate to price in the owner's contingency. It's the same, they have the same wording. That's why I say they kind of like the same thing.
Okay, so is there any other discussion on? Now I'll call for a vote of approval for item eight. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed?
Eric Wilson abstain.
Trustee Pierce abstain.
Okay, so there are two abstentions. And the item passes. Thank you. Item 14, do I have a motion to consider item 14?
Trustee Pierce.
Second.
Second.
Go ahead, trustee Pierce.
Okay, the problem I had with the administrative offices and this is asking us to approve. Whatever consideration and authorization of the chancellor designated to execute the renewal employment contract. Again, I keep saying, there's not enough documentation. I see names, I see what they do, I see no salaries. I can't in good conscience, remember we are taxpayers fiduciaries. Approve or vote on something where I don't have salaries. You know, I don't know, somebody could be making $500,000, but I don't know that because. There is no salary next to the names. Now I did get in contact with Mario and he did send me, even though I was on the late show, he did send me the salaries. But you know, I have a problem with voting on something where I don't see a salary. I don't think that's good business. It's, at least it's not trustee Pierce as a taxpayer fiduciary. So that was my problem with that and for calling it a question.
Any other comments?
Are the salaries supposed to be attached when we're going through this motion of approval? So we'll know when we are approving?
The practice of, of submitting, publishing those salaries with this.
That's not what I want. That's what we need. We need to know what we're going to be voting on if, and if those prices are right versus just giving this and having a search for each one.
And these are public employees. Their salaries should be posted. I mean, you know, seriously?
So what I've heard, Dr. Head, Dr. Head, you please confirm that going forward, we will include those salaries, which has been done in the past. But we assure that the salaries are included when these types of items are placed on the agenda. Is that accurate?
Yes, the part of the issue we have right now is that we would have the current salary, not any projected salary, right? So these are rollover contracts that already been. Their contracts have already been extended for a year. So. I mean, we can put the salaries in there going forward. So I believe we had to have agreement on that to include those salaries in the future on this type of item.
There are no other comments and I asked for approval on item 14. All those who approve?
Hi.
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 And the, any, no?
Trustee will abstain because I didn't have my information ahead of time and I'm not going to prove anything blanketly without having everything.
Trustee Pierce abstains. Trustee Wilson?
No.
Goes no. The item passes. Thank you. Financial report.
All right, let me turn the microphone on. Uh, thank you trustees. I have for you tonight, the financial statements for the month ended April 30th, 2022. In our current fiscal year of 2022, right? The current fiscal year runs through August 31st. So first here on revenues, revenues received so far is at 340 million, which is 85.6% of the revenues that we. Had budgeted in the adopted budget. You can see that is running somewhat low compared to some prior years. But some of that is, as I've said in prior months, to be expected as we have seen the declines in credit hours, students impacting the student revenue. Next slide, please. This is the same picture, but on the expenditure side. So here as of April 30th, we had spent 224 million in our actuals, actual expenditures. Which is 58.2% of the adopted expenditure budget. As you can see, we have continued to. Work to be cautious with our spending and that percentage is running below where we were at that same point in time in prior years. Next slide, please. In terms of our forecast for the year, there really is no change here from prior months. The 4 million reflected. Is the estimated impact to tuition and fees from the fall and spring credit hours being. A decline, right? In the budget, we had assumed flat 0%, but from the decline that actually occurred is the 4 million. What we have not forecasted yet, because we don't know the final numbers yet, is the summer term. As of today, that is also a decline, but we have not yet reached the final official day numbers for both summer one and summer two term. So that is not factored into this forecast yet. Next slide, please. So as we have done throughout the year, and I mentioned this previously, on the currently estimated $4 million shortfall in revenues from student revenues. We have then gone and made offsetting budget adjustments. To offset that impact to our revenues. Next slide, please. Here just an update on the FEMA reimbursement update. Like I said, I have switched to not necessarily including this every single month, but including it anytime there is a change to these figures. And I'm happy to report that we continue to slowly but surely collect the FEMA reimbursements. This past month, we did receive 500,000 in new award funds from FEMA. So you can see, we had the prior report. 20.4 million obligated from FEMA, but not yet awarded. That is down, now down to 19.8 million still to be awarded. But an additional 500,000 has been awarded to us. So. Low, steady, slow pace, but progress. Yeah, that concludes my report. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other reports, buildings, grounds, construction projects, anything that sort? Right. Any future suggested future agenda items from anyone? I just want to.
I just want to, I'm sorry. So I just want to say thank you so much for officiating today's meeting on my behalf. Thank you.
Oh, you're most welcome. Anytime. I, I just want to state down the future agenda items that we will have a workshop. We're going to plan and do a workshop in July to discuss. The content and the format of the consent agenda items, just to assure that that gets in the record and we will do it. Any other comments?
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, make sure again that we do have another update on the policy review committee. I just want to see where we are.
Uh, trustee, trustee Pierce, could you state that one more time?
Uh, I just wanted to, to put on the agenda the policy review committee update. Again.
Yeah, well, I think we've got trustee vote's commitment to that. You've got my commitment. I'll, I'll certainly follow up with trustee vote.
Okay, I just want to make sure it's on the agenda. So trustee vote can speak to it.
Say again, please?
I just wanted to make sure that it's on the agenda as an item so that trustee vote, you know, can speak to it. Just let us know where he is as far as meetings and what's going on.
Well, under, under item 10 of our meeting agenda, there is a place for board committee report. So next time, trustee vote, would you please? Be willing to give a report on the progress we make?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, well, that's fine.
I'm sorry, Mario. Mr. Castillo, will you please, the board recognizes, Councilor Castillo, go ahead. Oh, absolutely. Come, come forward.
What's going on? I can't hear you. what's going on? I can't hear you.
I can't hear you either.
As a point of information, I would like to clarify to the board of trustees in an open meeting, in an open session, that on May 5th at 5:40, around 5:40 PM during an open session, I did misrepresent to the board of trustees at the Office of the General Counsel who had not received a Bethune contract. That was a mistake on my part. It was not willful misrepresentation to the board. And over a decade of briefing this board, I have never willfully misrepresented anything to this board in either open or closed session. At 5:46, when I regained my seat, a member of my staff highlighted to me that they, in contravention of our normal operating procedures in the Office of the General Counsel, had accepted the Bethune contract. At 6:06, I received that contract from that staff member. And by 6:11, I had emailed the board during the live meeting. Also, under Robert's rules of order, I cannot be recognized to clarify anything unless I am recognized by the board. In the future, I will make sure to request a point of information, as I have just done, to clarify that because I never want to be represented as having anything but integrity when I report to the board. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Let me say on this issue, that if you're, trustee Wilson, if there are any issues outstanding that need to be discussed, I recommend, you know, a, a meeting, a get together with perhaps chairman Salivar, the chancellor, and Mario to work out any disagreements or misunderstandings that may have occurred. I think this is the best thing to do, you know, to, to clear this item. And councillor Castillo has said he will, you know, how should I say? Follow, follow his recommendation in the future. Are there any other discussions for this meeting? If not, then I adjourn this meeting. Thank you.